Yeah, I went over and tried it up and they covered their brush up. It's just too short.
They gotta come up with a little more.
Yeah, they need to stop looking at those shields as they drive around.
I didn't feel like my chair.
They used to get on fire when you were there. You think some sicklebar mowers is what they need?
They should probably get like a cutter and some air conditioner. They should probably get a cutter conditioner.
Yeah?
Yeah, because it crimps the hay so dry.
What Tucker says is I can't give one or we get one. His dad's getting sick of spending money. He's just gonna train them. One big purl of hay close together so that Baylor will do it.
The problem is it's too short. The one string has got to grab the other string. When it's too short, it's all taken.
So if you're coming across somebody with more.
I'll keep.
Thanks.
There's oxygen. There's oxygen in the spring.
Okay.
Because they're laying it. That would be my suggestion. Because it was real. They needed, like you said, the crimping is very important to help me.
Oh, meeting back into session. And I would like your friend, that's what we're moving out of. We have a motion to go back to the open meeting.
I make a motion to go back to the open meeting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Nola, yes. Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Next, we have actions from closed session. I left it pretty open, not knowing what the board would like to determine to do. Do we have anything there? Hearing nothing.
If we're gonna move on.
We'll move on to item number 14 on the agenda. Resolution 2021-24 for Brock and Cat Maintenance Assessment. This is the one that we had tabled last month because we had heard complaints against it. And on this, I am going to open up the public hearing. And I have three notes from people to read. So I'll read these as the first one, public comments. And then anyone else who would like to make a comment specifically on it is available. This one is from Gina Michael D. Witt. This is in regards to the special assessment for Cat Brock Roads. We support the assessment and the fee associated with it. Very nice, short letter. Next, we have one from Colleen Gibson. This is, Dear Township Board, I moved to Brock Street about eight years ago. And at that time, I did not realize that this street was deemed private. The road was being maintained. And it wasn't until a few years back that we received notice that this would stop because Brock and Cat were private. I was part of the group that went around to get signatures from residents to get the assessment put into place. I didn't realize that the assessment had an expiration date of 2020. But regardless, I would like to know how this fell through the cracks. And another assessment wasn't presented in its place for this neighborhood. Raiding, brining, and snow plowing need to be done. These two roads are far from private with the amount of traffic, ORVs, and dirt bikes that fly down the streets on a daily basis, kicking up dust and tearing up the roads. But worse than that, I can't imagine what it's like, what it's going to be like this winter. Three different school districts use our roads to pick up school age kids. And there is no way they will be able to get down the streets without them being blocked. And what about mail service? This is overall a bad situation that needs to be resolved. I just recently heard that a part of Cat was not being maintained, yet they paid their annual property taxes with the assessment like everyone else. That's just wrong. The situation cannot be tabled another month. Something needs to be done. Thank you for your time. And that's the last letter that I have. This is by Lisa Falter. I know she was here a little bit before. Dear Township Board, I've lived on Cat Street for over 22 years. When I was looking for a home, I wanted one in the Twin Lake area for many reasons. I grew up and lived in Holton, and I enjoyed living just a little way away from the city. I wanted my kids to attend Reese Puffer schools. I wanted to be close to not only Muskegon, but also Fremont and Wet Hall. I have worked in all three cities for my career over the years. I knew when I bought my home, it was a private road and understood what was involved to maintain. Over the years, I've continued to see traffic that uses our road as a public road to get from Dulson to Blue Lake Road, or from Blue Lake to Dulson to M120. When I first moved on the road, we had installed 25 mile per hour signs in the road to try and curb the speed that was being driven. This hasn't worked. I know it would take a lot of work to get that road to be considered a public road. And for the township to take it over, so that is why I was one of the neighbors. They got the petition signed by 70% of the neighbors to have the special assessment put into place. Honestly, I did not realize that it had an expiration date, nor did I realize that a portion of Cat was not being maintained at all. I went around last night to the neighbors on Cat, and I am encouraging them to attend the meeting on July 12th and to write letters to the board asking for you to renew the assessment ASAP. When I spoke with the supervisor this week, he said the decision had been tabled again. We understand there's a cost to maintain it. We get that. We expect that this cost is going to be the true cost to maintain the road and not inflate it to cover other expenses as well. We also expect that all of Cat Street will be maintained and not just a portion of it. We have many families who live on the road with school age children. And we have three school districts that come down our road to pick up students, Holton, Reese Puffer, and Wet Hall. By not passing this assessment, you're going to put a strain on those families and their children. We're finding other ways to get the kids to the pickup location. We also would not be getting our mail, which would mean we all might have to move the placement of our mailboxes so that we, they are moved to a main road for continued delivery. I realized we could hire a private person to maintain the roads, but I've done that route in the past. And it was a nightmare collecting payments from every neighbor. And not every neighbor paid their portion, which caused a lot of issues in the area. And some of us got that rolled in bag to pay for them as well. This is not an option. The assessment is a fair way for everyone who owns property on the road to pay their portion as it is a part of their taxes. I understand some property owners do not have a driveway on these private roads, but they're still assessed a fee. Unfortunate, that is the cost of owning more land. And while it may not be truly fair, there are options for them. If they don't want to pay, they can sell that land, and then the cost would be passed on to the new owners. I'm not sure if there's a way to only have property owners who have driveways on the private roads. And if there is, what would this do to the overall cost assessed to those owners? I'm sure you have received some numbers on what the cost of the new assessment would be. And I would like to know what those numbers are. Also, there must be some accountability for how those numbers were arrived at. And I would like to see that breakdown too. I also think it would be available to any resident on the road if we asked for balance in that account and breakdown of the expenses. I heard that at one of the past meetings, we had a few residents who did show up to complain about the assessment. And I know that four of those people went down the portion of Cat that was not being maintained. And they truly do have a right to voice their displeasure with paying for something and not receiving the services. Those disagreements would be gone by the county commission doing that portion. And those neighbors are in full support of passing the assessment if the portion of the road is getting done. As another resident of Cat Street, I'm behind them as well. And I know other neighbors will be behind them too. We will be one united front going forward on this. We have 16 homes along Cat Street, and you have many of us willing to speak up for each other. I am asking you as a longtime resident of township to pass this and get those roads back in the docket for being maintained as soon as possible. It's a right thing to do after all these years. This road is maintained by township without the assessment and then with the assessment. If anyone wants to discuss this prior to the next meeting, she, use her phone. Those are the three written comments. If anyone would like to come up and give a spoken comment for Brock and Cat, you can do so at this time.
Hi, Colleen Meyer, 6432 Cat Road. I've lived on Cat Road for about seven years. And the last couple of years, the assessment, you know, with us putting that in place has been really good. We've had, you know, snow plowing and the grading. It's really important. I mean, obviously, we have a lot of young kids. And we've got people that are selling their houses. And, you know, little kids are moving in. And we don't want the little kids to have to walk all the way down the up road and then start on that road. So we just need to make sure that, I think, everybody's in favor of, everybody on the road is in favor of the assessment. We just need to get it done right away as soon as possible. Thank you.
Anyone else for Brock and Cat? Seeing nothing, I'm going to close the hearing. And we are looking for a motion from the board.
I make a motion to accept the resolution number 2021-24 for Brock and Cat Road Special Assessment.
Any seconds? Any other discussion?
I got a question. Why is part of Cat Road not being maintained?
It appears to me, so there's two parts of Cat. One above Brock and one below. And it seems like that bottom portion, they sometimes weren't going down when they were going down both Brock and Cat. They weren't hitting that bottom section.
So that's the Muskegon County ownership not fulfilling their duties?
And I've talked to them about it.
They've been paid to do. Okay. And shouldn't there not be private road signs? Because somebody said they bought property on that, and they didn't know it's a private road. Shouldn't that, like, anytime that I'm driving around anywhere, I see private road on a road sign. Shouldn't there be signage that says, states that it's a private road?
I'm not sure on the protocol.
Because there's houses for sale on, and we drove. Today, there's houses for sale. It's like, if nobody knows what they're getting involved in, that's like a hit. That's a hit.
That is my house. And I did make sure that the new owners knew that it was a private road. And it's in the title work and all of that. So they won't feel the same way that I did. Maybe I was told, but I didn't really understand it. I just wanted that house.
And Nola, I did just buy a sign that says, Private Road, residents only, and put it on one of the 25 mile an hour signs. For the Cats, unfortunately, I did not do it for Brock. But I did put it up on Cat.
I'd say that needs to happen in order to control the traffic. Like, if they're, they're paying all that extra money to have their road maintained, and other people are coming on private roads, you know, and it's tearing up their road. I'm like, uh-huh. It's private. No.
Yeah, but the money's going to you guys. It should be your responsibility. But not you, but it's going to the township. It's going to Dalton Township. If you're the one charging it, you should be the one putting the signs up, not us.
Why do you think I'm, why do you think I'm making a mention of this?
You're mentioning it now. Don't tell me you didn't know about it. Carrie, you just said you were down our road the other day. You know there hasn't been a private drive.
I understand that everyone would like things solved in the past. Unfortunately, we can't because of the lack of time travel.
All right, let's move forward.
Right.
Okay, we'll see how long it takes you to move forward. Let's see.
Yeah, well, we've moved through the four assessments already. That's what we're on for Brock and Cat right now. Yes, any other discussion from the board? Roll a call.
Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Nola.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori. Yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Next, Resolution 2021-28 for Middle Lake Weed Control Assessment. Now, I will open the public hearing for this one. Does anyone have a comment about Middle Lake assessment? Looks like people are moving the other way. I will close the hearing for Middle Lake. And do we have a motion from the board?
I make a motion to accept the resolution number 2021-28 for Middle Lake Weed Special Assessment.
Nola, seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Lee. Gerald.
Yes.
Lori. Yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution 2021-29 for Twin Lake Weed Control Assessment. And we'll open the public hearing for Twin Lake. Anyone like to come up and comment? Seeing no one. I'll close the public hearing. And do we have a motion from the board?
I make a motion to accept Resolution 2021-29 for Twin Lake Weed Special Assessment.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Nola.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori. Yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we are into the purchasing of bid policy. And would you put it in less, 10 hours more?
Twenty.
Twenty something hours. I looked at this when we first got into office, and we knew it needed to be adjusted. And when I looked into it, it needed to be adjusted more. I put it off. The bodies were gone through a lot of things. But luckily, we're back around to this. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-32 pertaining to the purchasing policy.
Second by Carrie. Any other discussion by the board? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Nola.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori. Yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a planning commission member, Todd Howland, has applied for the open spot. On the planning commission where we had a resignation. So we're still trying to sort out the terms, because they normally go for three year terms. But this one, just be finishing out this one and try to get things closer to where they should be standard, essentially. And I included for the board some of his background. And had a good interview with him.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Todd Howland, the planning commission, to replace Raine Lunsford for the term that will end in December of 2021.
Second by Lee. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Lori. Yes. Lee. Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congrats. Next, we have a land sale request for this odd little piece of land. It's a small piece in between two other pieces of land up near Wet Lake Drive. And it's one of those things that kind of falls through the crack in land. There's stuff all over the place. Usually, people buy them to add on to some property they already have next to it. So I included the assessor's true cash value, which is $200 for this piece on here. And obviously, the map goes along with it. Do we have a motion about this law?
I make a motion to open parcel consideration of the $200.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori. Yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Next, we have item 19A, which we added for the land sale. And I have it here. It is still sealed. So I'm gonna open this at this time. All right. So the bid is $35,500. $35,500.
What was the, what was it going for?
Between, the minimum bid is 35.
Who was that one, found by MeeDee Road, that we had last month?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. You put it up for bid last month.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. This continued back in the meeting.
I make a motion to accept it.
Motion by Carrie to accept the bid.
I will sign it.
Saying by Nola. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee. Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori. Yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congrats.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2021-09 concerning view preservation. This has been a hot topic around the lakes. Well, we basically ran into similar in our ordinances that hold from Grand Haven that are vague and subjective and don't actually apply. Talked to Grand Haven about it. You may not run into too much because the state largely regulates the water area that they have on their lakes. So they end up having to go through Eagle for a lot of their stuff. So this has gone through the process of review by the planning commission and has come back to us with these adjustments. There's also one type of adjustment that they ran across in that same section here. And so it's adjusting that as well, which is changing or to of, or the other way around.
I make a motion to approve Order 2021-09 concerning minimum setbacks in view preservation.
Motion by Carrie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by the Lee. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Lee.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Gerald.
Yes.
Yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the golf cart ORV ordinances, which are known people are very excited about. They've been talked about for years, and nothing has happened with them. We're finally making things happen, but government does move slow, which is good, I would like to point out. You don't want your government to move too fast. The government is very dangerous. And in this particular case, we got held up a time that I didn't think we'd be holding up. So we have to make publications about holding a hearing specifically on these, because we'd be putting ordinances in, new ordinances, adding to. And then we've been debating that for months. It's a discussion item. We've been getting that worked out. But if we don't go about it correctly and correct postings and correct hearings, then you run into all sorts of trouble with it not being a real thing when it goes through. So even though we have two resolutions and two ordinances sitting in front of us, this should be pushed off. And I just heard right before the meeting that it's not a 14 or 15 day publication time. It's a 28 day publication time, which means it probably wouldn't even happen by next month. It'd probably be two months.
Well, I looked at this thing and saw that on page two, a sentence starts with, "Golf carts shall not be operated on state tronk line highway, any public road or street with a posted speed limit greater than 30 miles an hour." I thought we agreed fully fine.
Yeah. What? The state law says 30 miles an hour.
So the last ones that we had for discussion, I had written. And so I wrote them in a way that I thought was reasonable. Lori was going back through them and looking at some various, various things. And she has put these ones together. And there were a few things where I would have been going against state law and that type of thing. So it's completely reasonable to bring them up and to discuss them at this time, because we'll be looking at.
Right. Here's my issue with this one. State law, what does it say about the Amish and horses buggies on 50 ton mile?
I honestly also.
There's a slow moving sign on.
And the golf cart is gonna have a slow moving sign on as well. It's not a triangle.
State law does prohibit operation on state tronk lines or any street with a speed limit of 30 miles an hour.
I don't think you see Amish going 65, going at 55. No, exactly. But that's one thing. If they're going at 55 mile an hour road, if you're a golf cart, you should be able to go down a side road.
It makes sense that Amish are.
But they're not speeding on that road.
I've interacted with them a lot, so I don't like.
I'm not swiping Amish.
Exactly. Yeah, that's what's making it motorized.
Correct.
For the motor and not the water.
Right. That's why, that's why they always say, I think your golf cart, like under 25 mile an hour, should be able to go down the side of roads. But it's here, it's something around the island, around the lakes here, stuff like that.
I'm telling you, people walking down all the road, it's 40 miles an hour all the time. And one guy said, I stood out there at Lakewood, and I'm able to talk to the state trooper. State trooper never said a word to him. So if it's a state law, shouldn't the state trooper be enforcing it?
Well, a big part of the problem ends up becoming, what fights do we want to fight? Do we want to try to move forward and change state law on this, or?
Do we have to adopt an ordinance in the first place concerning this?
Well, what is it in the other, North Muskegon, what they're golf carts, what's their speed limit saying? West Orange and theirs. It's a state.
We've had them in the paddocks before. We looked at a bunch of them, so it's hard to remember.
I think it was 40, was it 35? No road in North Muskegon.
I know the speed limit for driving a golf cart, I do agree it came from the North Muskegon one, was 15 miles an hour. But I don't remember the speed limit for roads from their ordinance.
Concerning registration inspection and all that stuff, are we taking responsibility for people's driving? Why do we have to have people register a golf cart? Is this a question? That is a question. Is it just a money grab?
No.
Make sure we can't take money. Is it registered through the state?
No.
Registration, if we register, we don't take money for it.
We're just checking the inspection fee.
Yes, the inspections. Registration, inspection, and fee prior to using.
I put that in there, but I'm just very personally informed that we can't take money for doing that. I mean, we can register, but we can't charge a fee.
Good. Well, okay.
That'd be interesting.
Good.
No.
Okay. Well, when I see the word fee, that tells me.
That's a fee. No.
Oh, wait. This is just for, at this point, it's just for us to review and to.
Yep.
Yeah, because, yeah, I didn't know about the hearing that was my fault. I thought.
Why Frigida Omar?
Okay. Yeah, so. We're looking at, it would be September before we bring this to the board, the resolutions to the board again, because we have to have 28 days. So.
And we'll still get it down in the first year. For the, it's the same restriction with the ORVs for the speed limits I saw on here on page two. ORVs should not be operated on a state tronk line highway in any public road or street with a posted speed limit greater than 30 miles an hour. That's it.
Yes.
And also in line one, this is at a speed of not more than 25 miles per hour or lower, closer to ORV speed limit or in a manner that interferes with traffic on the road. Is that supposed to be less? So, yeah. Because it reads.
For the ORVs?
Yeah.
Yeah, the maximum's being 25 miles an hour. Did I do that wrong?
Close has not more than.
It should be less than.
Not more than.
I make the motion to postpone resolutions and ordinances concerning golf carts and ORVs only one month. Well, actually, I just.
Well, if we do it for, I wanted it, so I wrote that. And because I thought we'd only have to do it for one month, but because it's not a 14 or 15 day posting for the hearing, it's up to 28 days, then it makes it difficult to do it in one month.
So we can't, so if it's 28 days then? Like, well, I don't understand. Yeah. The next board meeting is August 9th. So.
So we can't legally do it then?
Well, I'd say.
I just think we just do no action right now.
No action?
We could just do no action.
We could take it. We could postpone it for two months. I'm going to postpone it for two months.
All right. So we have the original motion by, you know...
I withdraw. And she backed away.
Okay. So now, are you making a motion postponing for two months?
Yes.
Or just...
Yes.
All right. So a motion by Carrie. Do we have a second?
A second.
A little seconds. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Renee.
Lee.
Gerald.
Lori.
Yes, Jeffrey.
Yes. Next, we have outdoor storage. And specifically on this, we've encountered the question just twice since I've been in office. But it's not here, should there be the ability to have more outdoor boat storage, ORB storage, that type of thing, which because we have so many boats and ORBs in the area, it seems reasonable to consider. But currently, right now, it could not be expanded and it could not be added to anywhere that doesn't have it. So it seems reasonable, at least to consider it for the area to me.
Yeah. I make the motion that the planning commission review the regulations concerning self-storage units and consider whether or not allowing outdoor storage is reasonable.
Any second?
I'll start.
No more seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Next, we have signs with technology. And we've already gone through the signs, and the planning commission has gone through the signs a lot over the last number of years. But specifically on this, we eased up the regulations for signs and some of the types of signs when we first got in. That process has fully gone through. Specifically on this, we've had people inquire about updating signs with some electronic version. And they were prevented from doing that, so I thought it'd be worth considering and looking into it.
I make the motion that the planning commission review the sign ordinance with a view to making signs, including technology, more amenable to business interests.
Any second?
I will start.
A little seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. You guys have this. And the next thing is boarding lodging houses and agricultural. And when someone had inquired into this, we at first thought we found a section covering it. But what it covers is something more like multifamily housing within the same unit. So it doesn't allow something like a caretaker or a worker facility on that same piece of property. And because they were inquiring into it about having a caretaker on the same piece of land for horses, specifically in this case, and it seemed odd to adjust the one because it's made where everyone living in the same building, and we just don't have one for separate buildings in agricultural, so that's what this is addressing.
I make the motion that the planning commission review the zoning ordinance with a view toward allowing agricultural caretaking out.
Any second? Any seconds? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Noah. Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on to our discussion items, the first thing we have is the election equipment. We already discussed this before about Lori inquiring at another machine, so that all the ballots can be counted in a timely fashion. And since we had more information on it, I just wanted to include it in here. Any questions, thoughts of these comments and concerns?
The one thing I did want to mention is, when I contacted the city in Arc Shores, I didn't realize they were going to pay. This cost includes the five-year maintenance for the next five years.
Oh, yeah.
So it is a little more than I originally talked to you about, but now all the machines are on the same page and their maintenance will happen the way they should, so our elections should be very smooth.
Anything else? And after that, we'll move on to sewer inspection and maintenance. And obviously, I've been working on this sewer problems since getting in office, and this is one half of those, the inspection and maintenance. The other side is the money side, which is a big concern and we're working on as well. And this company was able to go out and look at the sewer, and I sent them a bunch of images that we have of the system, that type of thing. He estimates that there's a little over 3,000 feet somewhere, but he wasn't able to get an exact number because he doesn't think our pictures, our documentation of them is excellent. But we do have some numbers here that we can start to run and consider for putting into the budget with inspection and maintenance moving forward. And this is about video inspection. And when they're doing video inspections, see if there's any damage, anything like that. They do have to clean certain sections so that they can adequately do it, so that some of those numbers are on here too, what they might add up to. Any questions, thoughts of these comments and concerns?
Have you commented that there's some certificates right now?
Like, problem?
Yeah.
Not that I've heard of, not that they noticed. They did say there are going to be some sections that would need to be cleaned.
Yeah, right off the scene.
Yeah, but other than that, it's... They didn't say nothing's broken or anything like that, not that they saw about that before. Anything else? All right. So we have M-120 riders and blue light traffic control signal. Obviously, huge discussion, probably less decimated in the area, something like that. I grew a blue light, I went to Holden schools, I know a lot of people that are pressure, obviously. Yeah, I mean, it's a huge movement about having a light there. There's been a movement, probably a strong movement for at least five years by having a light there. I haven't learned into it several times since being in office. It's very difficult to get movement to happen there, but I know in the area, there's a movement to get petition going. Now, petitioning against doesn't do anything since we'd like it to happen anyways, not us holding it up, not me holding it up. So I've inquired into that a little bit, of who that would actually go to. And it's also not the county road commission holding it up, it's MDOT, it's at the state level that you're holding it up. And so that's who has to try to be moved. I've exchanged a few emails with them, and not sure exactly what will happen and what we can make happen. I will keep inquiring. And I'm trying to find out where a petition would go to. You know, I haven't answered that yet.
Got to be spooky.
Any questions, thoughts of these?
Too many spooky votes.
Nothing there? All right. We'll move into our second public comment section. So if anyone would like to come up at this time, name, address, three minutes if you would. Yes?
I'll keep you tuned. My listen at 8292 West Lake Road, I have a couple of comments and a question. First comment, I'd like to thank the board for all the work that they do to serve this community. One of the suggestions I would have, in future executive sessions, it might be plausible to hold those executive sessions at the end, so as to let the good citizens of the township evacuate and leave. It might be a good suggestion. Second suggestion is a stronger control of the three-minute rule I put myself on time. Sometimes these meetings get out of order and someone needs to control the meeting so it doesn't get out of order. Question, the motion on the over-the-road vehicle slash golf cart. You approved a 60-day, does that include a 28-day hearing from the public? And then the board will make a determination at the end of that 60-day? It's a question.
So basically, we will... I'm going to pause because I don't think that should be... We will pass or not pass something at the September meeting?
Fair enough. Next question, resolution 201823, that's 2018. This had to do with the ride drainage and cleaning out between the lakes. So the portion of the ride drain slash not ride drain area of controversy, the area between West Lake and Middle Lake, clearly it wasn't down to the same specs as the drain between Middle and Twin. And half of that has got rickrack rock, including erosion back in. The half that goes from the bridge west that's not, I understand the road commission has concerns, and it's got a plan in place in terms of the replacement of that bridge. I just think that it was maybe a shortfall on the engineering slash follow-through of the previous administration to ensure that that was properly constructed and what's the plan for maintenance of that, because without proper maintenance, you'll be spending this over and over again. I've been actively involved with the first part in the 70s and 80s and the last part. That will conclude my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I can address the channel a little bit at this time. So basically, it was probably shorted a bit. It was over $80,000 to do those channels between the two lakes. They are... There was a huge political fight between the drain commissioner and the township at that time, and the township ended up winning. They did the project. When I got in office, I inquired into what the maintenance plan was. There was not one. It did not exist at all. And so I was trying to work out what to do with that. We got the erosion permit extended by the county. We have an erosion permit from the state to maintain those with hand tools. But obviously, they've been collapsing in on the sides, partially because the one, the large one between Middle Lake and West Lake, or the large one between Twin Lake and Middle Lake, I know people have been driving through and I've visited all the neighbors out there except for the one on West Lake's side. I didn't catch them because they spend most of their time down in Grand Haven. But otherwise, I've talked to all the neighbors that border that area about the situation, and we've been looking at what to do. And obviously, a lot of it has collapsed, and then we hit a really low water level with the drought, the spring, those two things combined are a bit of a disaster. So you're right, they would fill in. It looks like they're filling in relatively fast, which means the township would end up spending something like $80,000 every two years to dig those out, which is insane and ridiculous. So I believe that they can be braced up, or at least I've heard. I've had the conservation district looking into what it would take to brace up those sides, hopefully for significantly less cost than that, and then also would maintain better in the future. There would be slight fill-in on the ends from wave action of sand, which then could be maintained by hand, but the sides collapsing could not, so it just needs to be done better.
Are we all going to get charged another assessment for that?
You weren't charged an assessment for that one. So what happened is the ride drain, there was a lot of flooding in the late 1970s. The ride drain was put in in 1984, that's when those channels were originally put in, along with the lake level outlet device on Twin Lake, which we're trying to get exchanged so that it's in good shape. But technically, legally, part of the drain commission, she said she was going to do it a few months ago, it was delayed on manufacturing. So hopefully, that's happening a few months from now, out of the budget she already has, so nothing else associated with it. But the project itself, with the channels between the lakes, probably should have had a special assessment district set up instead of out of the general fund from everyone's taxes around the lakes, but that was not done. Chip, any other public comments?
Cut the zell, 95 plus kids tonight. Or please don't forget about gypsy moths. It's started working out right now. I got a 30 acre woods, white oak woods, it's completely stripped. Hopefully, it'll make it. Years past, I'm sold timber. I want that woods to continue, so maybe if it's long enough, I can sell it more time. But back in the 2005, '06, the county sprayed for gypsy moths. I don't know if it was quash sharing thing with townships or not, or if it was done by DNR. But I think you guys, I mean, it's going to get worse next year. People are going to lose a lot of egg. We'll cover if we have two years in a row. So please, work with the county. Work with the county, work with DNR, if there's anybody can, give them some money so we can get those airplanes in the sky and spray.
It's being discussed right now. The last time was about 11 years ago, something like that. The guy from the county that handled it wanted to retire.
Rob Ribbons.
He wanted to be retired before it occurred again, and he failed to reach that goal. And so now it is occurring again. I contacted the DNR a handful of months ago. They thought that it would not be a problem in this area. This year, they were obviously wrong, as we've had a lot of complaints, although it does cut off just shortly south of us, because Meskeen Charter Township does not have very many complaints at all. So Rob Ribbons is looking into a plan for it this fall. They will drive around, assess the different egg things, because sometimes they die from a natural virus, so they don't need to be addressed. Nature addresses demand their own. But if that doesn't happen, then they will draw numbers, and we will have to budget for it next year and then treat for them in next spring, and there will be an option for getting out of being treated in your area. BT is a bacteria, originally a ground bacteria that explodes the inside of the worms, basically. And I will find a better way to communicate these types of things rather than addressing them in the public comment section afterward. Probably short videos on YouTube, that way everyone can just get the information that I'm giving. Good. Other public comment?
Can I get up front now?
2795 Middle Lake Road. Part of it was the gypsy moth thing that I was going to say, so you addressed that. The other thing was when you were talking about the lake on M-120 in Twin Lake. Usually what has always happened in the past is MDOT brings in their counters and they do a road traffic study, and it never, we never have enough traffic for that to warrant a light. And so, I mean, at this point, all these years I would complain, that's all they've ever done. And then they always turn it down because it doesn't qualify. My thing is that if they would just at least put up a sign that says right turn only, or put an arrow painted on the ground in the right turn lane going towards Walton, going north on M-120 at that corner, everybody uses it as a pass through, and that ends up causing a lot of accidents. And that's, even if they, the police sit there for a couple of days and write a bunch of tickets for using that improperly, that could maybe get some attention to some people. But really, it would be nice if they could just paint an arrow on the ground, put a sign on it that says right turn light only. Because that's where a lot of the problems come from.
Other public comments?
Hello, Chris Badcott, 256 Maple Street. 44-plus year resident in Twin Lake, love this place. Anyways, I'll keep it short and sweet. I just wanted to voice my opinion for the approval of the golf carts and the ORBs. And I'm sure the board already knows too, but Newago County and Volvo have the ORBs, and they do have 25 mile an hour speed limit on roads that are 55 miles an hour. So, you know, again, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an attorney, but I know that it's possible somehow to be able to use them on other roads. They won't allow them on M roads or highway roads or stuff like that. I guess I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that.
And that's probably, yeah. It's that we're looking at, because I wanted to make sure that we can get those. We have one, we have been selling it because we don't want to find it.
Right.
I worked at the state of Michigan, correction also, 20 years. So it's like, I didn't want to get in trouble at work because I'm driving a golf cart down my street. That's why you got them on our zone, you know? So it was a selling department.
Hey, guys, I just wanted to make sure I missed the previous meeting, so just wanted to voice my opinion and make sure the board was aware.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for doing.
Thank you for being here.
Other public comments?
2763 4.9. I'm not here to bash anybody. I'm just here about job performance. I just noticed with our money, the CD account has been the same total since November at least. And concerned that that money is not being reinvested to get something with a higher interest rate and like the Michigan class that we are invested in, those are really low right now. They've continued to decline since November, and they're like down points 203 or something like that. And why, I mean, nothing is being done to look, to reinvest that money in something that has a higher interest rate, because I know for sure that there is something other, because I just Google it and I found some stuff. So that's a big concern to me, is that we are losing money, but our money not being reinvested. And somebody who has elected treasurer, I think that's their job, to do the best for the citizens, to make money and to move that around, to move it. And none of the money has ever been moved, that I can see, since 18 years. And then also, now I lost my train of thought. It's just, like, someone I noticed also that maybe some bills aren't being sent out on time, because like one month, something won't be paid, and then the next month, that will be paid, and then that same month will be paid. And I'm concerned about late fees. So are we also incurring late fees on bills that aren't being paid on time, which also adds to our debt? And I'm just concerned with the overall performance of our money being held and not being utilized if it should be utilized for the citizens, because we elected somebody to do that, and I'm assuming that person did their homework to see exactly what the duties of that job would be, and they would want to do the best they can for us. But I feel that those duties are not being even addressed. I mean, I don't see where any of our money is even moved around at all since, it's always been the same thing since the new office took place and the old office is here. And also, I'm not trying to bash, but I think it's a distraction when we have family members running around or coming in and hanging out in the office. That's a distraction. You're here to do a job, and you are here to do that job for us. to do that job for us, we elected you, we're counting on you to do the best for us that you can do, and I think just having somebody that's coming in, that's a distraction, that's not, that's not acceptable at all, that needs to stop. And also, all the negativity and all the, um, the bashing, the circus, I'm gonna call it the circus, is what I'm gonna call it, it needs to stop, because that's on YouTube, our medias are on YouTube, all the other counties around us are just like, what's going on over there? You know, I don't want to be known as Pennuckey, I don't want to be known as Pennuckey anymore, I want to just, the chaos needs to stop, the bashing needs to stop, the coming up here and saying, oh, your son this, and you this, and you this, and you this, all that has to stop. Okay, on Facebook, that's a totally different story, that's Facebook, that's not real life, that's Facebook, but when you stand through the podium, and somebody starts, I don't, like her, I'm just gonna say, if somebody came at me and said, your sons are falling in this net, boom, done, you're gone, that is unacceptable, because that, she doesn't know if that's true or not, she's just born by what she thinks she knows, but now all these other people have heard that, should you think they're gonna look at her the same way? No, her the same way, any of you the same way. It's ridiculous, and it's gotta stop, you're all here to do a job, you're here for us, and you're supposed to be doing that, not getting into all this, he said, she said, Facebook shit, it's gotta stop. And the F words, when you're doing vote call for a vote, and because you're not happy with that vote, you don't say F no, it's professional, you can say, as soon as you walk at the door, you can scream it if you want to scream it, but when you, when we elected people, we didn't elect them to get up there and show their attitude, we didn't, because we all have attitude, but there's certain times that you use the attitude, there's certain times that you do not, it's professionalism, that's what it is, and I'm just sick of it, it's, it's just gotta stop, and I think our money needs to be reinvested, I think we've lost money, since this, this all changed in November, we have lost money, because that could have been reinvested a long time ago, and we could have been making money, that needs to be changed, bills need to be spent on on time, all this stuff needs to be done. That's all I got to say.
Any other public comments?
Uh, my name's Roydwa, 4383B, um, I'm actually here to address the ORB thing, which is probably not what people thought. I just want the board to take into consideration, because this is something that interests me, um, obviously, your state law supersedes your local ordinance, your federal law supersedes your state law, um, keep in mind that you guys, not all of you, some of this board at least passed a ordinance regarding marijuana recently, which was federally superseded over the state laws, um, keep that in mind when you're taking this ORB ordinance into account, um, you guys as a township board are able to write ordinances, um, and they may not coincide with the state law, um, which also means that people, just like under the marijuana ordinance, could still be charged and receive citations, um, but you do have that ability to kind of tweak that how, how you want, that's all I have.
Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Not yet, we'll have a board comment.
Oh, board comments, yes, yeah. Very reasonable board comments as well.
Quick question, quick, quick answer, there are no late bills paid, okay, because bills come out for itself.
I was just born by a late.
No, no, and it's fine, some of them, some of them have different due dates, but we do not pay, bills late, we do not pay late fees, just to, I just wanted to make sure to do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now you're set.
Any other?
I want to say thank you, every person that is in this room, showing interest for this township, you know, I'm, I'm really so new at this, at what I'm doing here, and I want to extend grace to you, but man, we need the grace right back at us, okay, and we're doing the best we can with what we have walked into, but I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see everybody calm and to hear your opinions, it's just, my heart is filled, like, this is community, and we gotta do things that's right for our community, because we're the community together, so thank you for being here and speaking.
And saying that, in that, that cabinet, there is a stack of paper, which are applications to either planning commissions, zoning board deals, or the board of review, we've got pretty 30 of them, so there's, for everyone to take one and say, like.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Roll call to adjourn.
A second.
A second by Noah, any discussion? Hearing none, all the favorites.